You're checking out a Mornings with Lone Star podcast. Don't forget, I, Dick Schisler, your morning DJ is live every weekday morning from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. on Conroe's FM 104.5, 106.1, and online at irlonestar.com with your morning radio show, Mornings with Lone Star, with weather and traffic at the top and bottom of every hour, and taking star requests on our Facebook page. If you want to be a guest on my show or sponsor Mornings with Lone Star, just contact me online at dick@irlonestar.com or call the station at 936-647-5747. Now, before we get to the interview on the podcast, I want to say a quick thank you to our sponsors of Mornings with Lone Star. For your morning coffee craves, or pretty much all time coffee craves, make sure to check out Conroe Coffee at 206 North Main in downtown Conroe, Texas. And again, a very special thank you to the sponsors of Mornings with Lone Star. Now, the interview from Mornings with Lone Star. The song is called "Back to Back." We're at Show Tool, Mornings with Lone Star, 9/11 and right now, we're going to do our Meet the Candidates, Nathan Arizani, our special guest today is going to be Dwayne Ham, who's running for city council. Folks, early voting starts next Monday coming up after this weekend. You can check all the information about polling locations and times at cityofconroe.org/election. Let's jump right into it. Nathan, how are you doing this morning?
I am doing fantastic, dude.
That's great to hear. It's good to hear. It's the weather, I don't know what's going to happen. It's going to rain at one point. I hope it's not like during the day where it's the most beautiful here in Conroe, especially Montgomery County. Like I said, folks, we have Dwayne Ham in the studio. Dwayne, how are you doing?
I'm doing great. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. We're welcome. This is really important for the city of Conroe to get out and vote, so we're going to kind of push that again and again, cityofconroe.org/election for polling times and locations. And by the way, there is a forum tomorrow with the Lake Conroe Republican Women's.
Lake Conroe area Republican Women, they're awesome, dude.
So they're hosting an event, or forum, open forum to anybody tomorrow at?
April Sound Church from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., actually mix and mingle for 30 minutes, and then they get the candidates up there, give a couple of minutes spiel, each one kind of a, what you call a campaign stump speech, and then they're going to be asking questions that people have emailed in, stuff like that, time permitting. They will also allow people to stand up and ask questions at that event also, and then afterwards, about 30 minutes of mixing and mingling, one-on-one time with the candidate, go, you know, find out more about what they stand for and things like that.
And Dwayne's going to be there, correct?
Absolutely.
So I believe it's for two positions going on on the ballot, folks. There's a mayor runoff, and then I believe it's seat number two, correct?
Seat number one.
Seat number one. And we have-
Position one.
Position one. There you go. And that's going to, that forum's going to happen this Saturday, folks, and I believe you can find more information online with that. But we have Dwayne Ham in the studio. If you don't mind, we're going to jump into getting to know who you are and the history of you in Conroe, and then we can move on from there and ask the real good questions about the serious issues Conroe's faced, and also what's great about Conroe, because one thing a lot of people who, I feel when it comes to political, it's always the bad, always the bad, always the bad. This person stinks, this stinks in the city, but I really believe there's some good things happening, and it's about keeping consistency and the focus on the path of making Conroe great, and that's why unfortunately, and unfortunately, you don't have people who can be city council forever.
You bet.
And so now we need, you're running for a position that the person is actually done with, correct?
Correct.
So that means-
Well, they're term limited.
Term limit, that's what I'm saying.
Term limited out.
So it's important to either continue that, what he's, that person was trying to do, or change it up a little bit. No, I don't really know that much about the seat number one, and so we'll learn more about that with Dwayne. So Dwayne, if you don't mind, introduce yourself and tell us about yourself.
Well, hello, folks. My name is Dwayne Ham, and I really appreciate y'all having me here today. It's always a good opportunity to come talk to the people, and hopefully y'all will send in some questions while I'm here, and I'll be happy to answer them. And I'm available to anybody anytime, and I want the citizens to know that. I am a conservative guy that is here strictly for the citizens of Conroe. I was annexed in out there when April Sound got taken in. I don't actually live in April Sound, but I lived just outside of the gates, and you know, I said, man, this is a great opportunity. I've been studying this water stuff for several years, probably since 13, I've been on top of this water deal, and some before that. And, man, we got annexed in, and I said, man, this is, this is time to put my knowledge and stuff to work and work for the citizens of Conroe and Montgomery County. The whole state of Texas is watching what Montgomery County and the city of Conroe is doing. Most people don't know that, but they are.
Well, it's funny you kind of jump into that about the annexation, because I know that was a topic that our guest yesterday spoke about being kind of like one of the big things about being mayor, and that there's new voters, there's new issues, and there's also new solutions out there.
Absolutely.
And we'll touch a little bit about the water, because I know that's probably the biggest topic for the city right now, but let's talk more about you. Like, you're a business owner?
I am a businessman. I invest in different things. I, you know, I'm multifaceted, how's that, you know?
So every time I see you driving around Conroe, I'd be like, I don't know what he's doing, because he's always doing something different.
Correct, I might be doing something different, yeah.
Okay, so what do you love to do in Conroe, then?
Man, I love Montgomery County, I have to tell you, and I love the city of Conroe. I mean, the revitalization down here that happened over the last 10 years is amazing. People should come downtown and experience Conroe. I mean, just walk around the shops, look and see what we have now. I mean, we are, we are in the growing stages still down here of making it fun and entertaining for people to come down to, but people should come down and experience downtown Conroe. It's our county seat, and, you know, I don't know, growing up as a kid, I remember going through county seats, traveling at Christmas time with my family, and all the Christmas lights and different things that cities did, well, county seats did, you know? Your downtown square back in the day was where everybody gathered at. I mean, that was the place to go. I mean, people used to play dominoes in, on the yard of the courthouse. I mean, that's just neat stuff. I mean, but everybody should come down and experience their downtown, their county seat, wherever they live. If you don't live in Montgomery County, you should go to your county seat and just experience downtown, because it's neat. It's just, there's so much history there, and, you know, I love it.
And with that in mind, too, what's neat about Conroe and the future of Conroe is, like we talked about the annexation, we're growing and growing and growing, and the growth in Montgomery County, so really, these positions that are going to be turn limited out, it's important to see who fills it in, especially with the focus of leadership and things like that, because we have an important role in mayor and the important role of seat two. So what we're going to do, folks, is we're going to take a quick break. During that break, send in your questions on Facebook, Mornings with Lone Star, Montgomery County Lifestyle, or email me, dick@irlonestar.com for Dwayne. We're going to take a quick music break, like I said, and we'll be back. We're going to learn more about what the future of Conroe holds, and especially why it's important for seat number one, and why Dwayne should be in that seat. So I hope you guys are enjoying yourselves so far for this program. We got great music. We got some Kacey Musgraves right here. This song is a well-known song by her, it's "Dime Store Cowgirl," speaking of small towns. And you're listening to Mornings with Lone Star, irlonestar.com. We're Montgomery County's community radio station here on irlonestar.com, and soon to be on Conroe's FM 104.5, 106.1. Don't worry, we'll get back to the podcast in a second. I just want to let you know, I'm live every weekday morning from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. on Mornings with Lone Star with Conroe's FM 104.5, 106.1, and worldwide at irlonestar.com. I have a lot of fun hosting the show, and if you want to have fun, you should join me. Join in by visiting Mornings with Lone Star on Facebook, and make sure to comment and post a star request if you want to hear anything. Mornings with Lone Star is your morning community radio show on irlonestar.com and Conroe's FM 104.5, 106.1. Cool Conroe boys right there with Folk Family Revival with Water Walker, and 924 here on irlonestar.com with Mornings with Lone Star, a special segment with Meet the Candidates, and we hope to continue this segment next week a little bit with Nathan Arizani of Montgomery County Lifestyle, hanging in the studio in downtown Conroe. Feel free to stop by, knock on the window. I'm sure the whole audience on the air will hear it too, because we get random people who walk in here, and they're like, is this the coffee shop? And I'm like, no, there's, there's microphones everywhere, and it doesn't smell like coffee, that's next door. It's pretty funny. We're sitting with our special guest, Dwayne Ham, who's running for seat number one of city council. Folks, get out and vote, starting next Monday, the upcoming Monday, all the way through the next Tuesday, you can early vote, and there's voting times and locations at cityofconroe.org/election. Please get out and vote. And don't forget, if you want to get more involved, we're going to be podcasting these segments, like Jim Gentry's going to be up today, and then hopefully this will be up later tomorrow, or earlier. I'm trying to get it before the forum. That's my goal, is to get the podcast done before the forum tomorrow, April sounds.
You're awesome.
So, you know what? Thank you.
And just so you know, too, Tony Fuller will be in next week.
Oh, fantastic.
Probably Wednesday, I'll know in about an hour or two.
Oh, cool.
And then city councilman Duke Coon, as of now, will be in Tuesday morning. I'll confirm that, listeners, again, this afternoon-
That's exciting.
-to talk about a councilman's corner, what's going on in the city, and he's doing that because we agreed we do it every quarter, but it's also a chance for him to talk about what he feels like's going on in the city, so that gives voters an opportunity to compare that with each mayoral and-
Because he's not running for anything, he's already in.
Nope, he's already in. But then that way, the different councilman candidates and mayor candidates can tie in their vision and talk with that if they want to.
Yeah, I wish dictators are still around, right? With all this, I don't know how to describe it in a nice way, all these people-
Wow, that's heavy.
I'm just kidding with y'all.
Dictators.
But what's important, too, is people out there who are listening are educated, so we got Dwayne Ham, and we learned a little bit about him in the first segment, about, you know, his involvement with Conroe, and now what I really like to know is the future of Conroe, because when you're on the city council, basically, folks, the city council meets workshop on, it's every other Wednesday, I think, and then they have, I guess this is the voting, what do they call it on Thursdays? What's their official way? On the following day, they have something where they go over the issues they went on Wednesday, right? Am I talking, I'm looking at me like I'm an idiot.
Wednesday is workshop.
Yeah.
Wednesday's workshop, Thursday's when they vote on it.
Okay, so it's important, you can go and check these out on IR City TV, you can watch it live, and you can actually be there in person. I think that's kind of a goal of mine, I'd love to see people listening to this, to the city council meetings, understanding what's going on, even though it sounds really boring, you should really check out Houston City Council once. Those are, like, you think these are crazy, those are the best, because one guy I was watching one time, and he claimed that you, the city councilperson, was surveillancing his home, and he believed in a shoe, like, I can't believe they let him talk for that long, because they're like, he had microphones in my shoe, and it was like two weeks ago, so you should really check that. It was hilarious, but sad at the same time, because I'm sure this man was somewhat psychotic. But go to these city council meetings, you're not going to see that here in Conroe. I know I got that a little off topic, but you need to be involved with city council and know what's going on, be involved with your, with your city, right? So it's 9:28, and now I want Dwayne to talk about what's important to Conroe in the future once you get a position, and also, even outside of your own interest in being city council, what do you see an issue for Conroe? And also, on the other side, what is Conroe doing really well?
Conroe's doing a lot of things great. I mean, the revitalization we talked about prior to this last segment was, was the revitalization that's going on down here, the strategic planning that's going on and the new growth that's coming here with Camp Strike being, with Johnson Development over there, that's going to be a great development, it's going to be kind of like the Market Street in the Woodlands, then we've got Hughes Development going out, 830 out there, and those are going to be amazing projects that are here for our citizens. Conroe's in the middle of a huge growth spurt right now, and what we do here lays the destiny and the vision for the future growth of Conroe. I mean, Conroe is not the sleepy little town that it used to be, you know, and my accent's going to run us out of here, I'm sure, because, let me tell you, the big boys are coming to play, and it's neat. It's neat to see what's going on, and yeah, we're having to fight traffic and our infrastructure and stuff is, has to be maintained at a state-of-the-art rate. I mean, we have got to make sure that our infrastructure is laid out perfectly because of the growth we're having. Look, there's 500,000 people in Montgomery County today, okay? Conroe is going to grow at a rapid rate, the city of Conroe's growing at a rapid rate. We will be, when 15, 20 years from now, we will be half the size, land, square miles-wise, of Houston, folks. We have got to, we have got to lay this out perfectly. We've got to make sure that we attract the right people, the right companies, to keep our taxes low, and make sure the citizens of Conroe have everything they need, and they're not getting taxed out of their homes, they're not getting taxed out of their businesses. We have a chance right now to lay it out perfectly, and if we don't do it right, if the city council does not have the vision for what Conroe needs, then we'll be in trouble. And there's cities, there's so many cities across Texas that weren't in front of that curve, and we have an opportunity to do that today.
Well, okay, let's, let's take what you just said, and let's get a little bit more specific, if you don't mind. So, you know, these important decisions to come to Conroe, what do you see being, like, say, the top one and two issues? I know water's one of them. I think that's always going to be any issue for any city, really, in Texas and other states, of course, but-
Hey, let me tell you, water across the state of Texas is a huge deal, but water in the city of Conroe and in Montgomery County is huge. There's nothing bigger. You have to have water to survive, A, and B, you can't, you can't tax people so hard and put so much pressure on water that people can't afford to pay their bills. There's people coming to me at the polls when I'm running last time in the primary, and telling me, my water bill is higher than my electric bill. What can you do to help me?
I'll tell them, stop taking so many showers. I'm just kidding. But no, I think, I think that is an alarming concern for people all around Conroe, especially Montgomery County, and it's a good issue to talk about. Do you think this is going to be kind of an important thing at the forum tomorrow? That issue?
I think so. I mean, protecting property values with what's going on around here with SGRA and Lone Star, we have got to work with them to figure out a solution to this. In 2001, when they were created, and I spoke yesterday, by the way, at city council about a resolution to remove San Jacinto River Authority from Lone Star. Now, look, I think San Jacinto River Authority, they're in the business of managing surface water, and I think that's great, and Lone Star's in the business of managing groundwater.
Now, any of those entities government-run or own?
Both of them.
Both of them are, okay. The state of Texas?
State of Texas.
Just trying to understand, trying to get a picture.
But, but people need to understand that they have, that there's a board up there, and San Jacinto River Authority sits on the board, and a lot of entities around here have a vote on that board, MUDs and different things, but, you know, there's a huge problem. The state mandated it, and rightfully so. We need to manage our aquifers, we need to be conservative consumers of our water, but we don't need to tax the citizens so bad that they can't afford to pay their water bills. Time and time again, people can't pay their water bills because they're so high. I mean, we're talking about, in the city of Conroe, we're talking about almost $5 per thousand gallons that people are paying, and heaven forbid that you have an acre of land and you're fortunate enough to have that, in some instances, after 35,000 gallons, you're paying $7.20, $7.30 per thousand. Some people's water bills are $800, $1,000, $1,200 a month.
Now, are these people, the reason I'm asking is, that doesn't sound like a normal homeowner in a suburban home. That's more of landowners, correct?
No, I mean, an acre of land is not a landowner. I'm a cowboy, I mean, I've had land, you know?
I just don't know, I was, you know, when you tell me those numbers, I'm like, I can't, I can't imagine getting that bill, but I don't know if that's realistic for me getting that bill.
Well, look, there's folks around here, but let's talk about the, let's talk about the normal folks, okay? Let's talk about our veterans.
Or the average, you know?
The average person that is on a fixed income, okay? And yeah, I threw out a number of 35,000 gallons, but at the end of the day, you know, the average home may use 20,000 gallons, just an average home. Heaven forbid you have teenage girls in your house that have long hair, you know, and, you know, have to shampoo that, I mean, we're talking about long showers and-
Well, it depends how many people are in the household. I understand, I have five brothers and sisters, so-
Well, there you go. That's kind of the point that I'm getting to, but what I'm saying is that, you know, so many things have moved forward in conserving water, but to price it, that to force the market that high, that veterans can't afford their water bills, people on fixed incomes, retired people on fixed incomes, that, it's just wrong. It's a basic necessity that we have to have water. We don't need to force that market to where people can't afford to do that.
Make it work for the citizens.
I mean, our taxes are high enough as they are, why should we tax water so high?
So let me ask you this, I know that a lot of what you do is, are we fixing to cut?
Yeah, we gotta go to break.
All right.
Sorry about that, folks. We're going to let Nathan-
I'll get a question in next week.
We're going to let Nathan kick off the next time after we get back from the break. We're with Dwayne Ham, who's running for seat number one in the city council for city of Conroe. Early voting, again, folks, is coming up. Go to cityofconroe.org/election for polling locations and times, and we'll be back here with Meet the Candidates, special segment on Mornings with Lone Star, irlonestar.com, and soon to be on Conroe's FM 104.5, 106.1. Here's some Mary Sarah with her cover. She was on The Voice, she was a very special candidate on The Voice for here for Lone Star Community Radio. This song is called "Stand By Your Man." We all know this one. I know, I know, I know, a break in the interview, right in the middle of it, but I wanted to let you know that Mornings with Lone Star is a great opportunity to sponsor your business. During these little annoying breaks just like this, your business can be heard, along with live audio spots during our regular live broadcast on Conroe's FM 104.5, 106.1, and our online stream at irlonestar.com. Sponsor Mornings with Lone Star will let you hit people with FM, TV, YouTube, and this podcast. If you're interested, just contact me online at dick@irlonestar.com or call the station, Mornings with Lone Star is Montgomery County's community radio morning show, and you should be part of it. Now, back to the interview.
Hey, I don't know the name of that song, but it was pretty deck gum good. Welcome back to Mornings with Lone Star, Lone Star Community Radio. How y'all doing?
Doing good so far. You're going to say something before I cut you off.
Yeah, I just want to know this, Dwayne. Look, a lot of people, you know, talk about what they do and stuff, you don't get a chance a lot of times to talk about what you do. Now, you tell me if I'm wrong, okay? I know that, and I'm going to use a term that maybe is wrong, but it's just my brain, in some ways, I feel like you're a lobbyist in a positive manner. You work a lot behind the scenes, correct me if I'm wrong, you connect people, business companies-
Well, he does a lot of different things.
Yeah, well, and I see you in the circles, whether it be a state representative, whether it be a state senator, you know, a congressman, Chairman of the House Ways and Means, Kevin Brady, and different, different things. If that's true, and that's a lot of what you do behind the scenes, helping to them out in what they do and other organizations, how is that going to help you or hinder you? You tell me, as a councilman, and especially with things like water and the other infrastructure things that'll come up, and working with the county government, which in my opinion, the city and county need to get a little closer and hug a little more.
I'll agree with you on that, for sure. Hey, let me just clarify, I'm not a lobbyist, but I do, I do work with all those people you're talking about. I work with our state representatives, I work with our state senators, and I work with our congressmen, and, you know, it's taken a long time to be able to get the ear of these people, it's not the easiest thing, they're very busy people. And let me just be clear, lobbyists, you know, have a bad name, and rightfully so in a lot of ways, but there's so much stuff going on that they have to have people, lobbyists, that go talk to them, because they can't know everything about everything, and, you know, so I used to, I used to really hate lobbyists, I mean, I just really did, and then the next thing I know, I'm up there fighting for a cause and I'm lobbying them. Hello? So, you know, it's, you know, it's a double-edged sword, but yeah, I mean, I fight for things that are conservative values, that save taxpayers money on a daily basis, and that's what, that's what Dwayne Ham is about, making sure, and A, that they're accountable for what they do. So, you know, we, you know, I'm president of the Texas Conservative Tea Party for conservative values and common sense, and I think we need a lot more common sense, and it's common sense things that sometimes get pushed to the side, and people go, well, that just, you know, it makes sense if we do, yeah, it does, it makes sense if we do that. Those are common sense things, you know, too many times our politicians get caught up in trying to get reelected instead of working for the people, and, you know, we're fortunate in Montgomery County. I said it, I said it last time I was on your radio show, that Montgomery County, we live in a bubble here, we really do, such a great place to live. City of Conroe's doing great things, and Montgomery County's doing great things and growing leaps and bounds. We live in a bubble. The notion, especially, I'll bring it back to water, the notion that one size fits all doesn't work when it comes to water. West Texas does have some major water issues, Montgomery County doesn't. We don't have subsidence issues, like some have said, that's hokey. Don't let those big words fool y'all, people. We do not have a subsidence problem in Montgomery County. Harris County did have a subsidence problem, and probably still does, there's a lot of water down there in Harris County, underneath that ground that, you know, that looks dry. So, you know, as those pockets fill, the ground sinks, you know, and, and, and look, folks, depending on how you build, you know, you know, our ground's moving a lot. We have a lot of sandy loam here and clay, and so our ground moves a lot, but subsidence we don't have. Shifting, maybe so, but we need to be careful. We need to be careful with our words that we use, but I've always fought for the taxpayers, always. We have got to make sure that we don't tax people to death. Our elected officials have got to work on a budget, and they just can't, they can't keep spending and taxing the people. We've got to hold the line somewhere, and so that's what I do.
Well, there you go, Dwayne Ham for precinct, seat number one, right? That sounded like, that's it right there.
Position one, yeah, position one.
How can people find you and get ahold of you to ask more questions? It's getting down to the wire. Early voting starts Monday. People need to wake up Monday morning, get off their butt, and go to one of the two locations and be there at 8:00 a.m.
Well, they can look me up on, you know, I have a website, dwainham.com, they can go there, they can go, my Facebook, I have, there's probably two or three Facebooks with Dwayne Ham on them that you can look at. I have to tell you, I'm kind of superstitious for coming right into the end, and I don't read the newspaper, I don't look at Facebook, and I don't look at websites. You could call it superstitious, but I stay focused on the mission of the people and what I'm, what I want to do and my vision, and so I don't look at a whole lot of that stuff, so don't be disappointed if I'm not right back at you, but I will tell the people on here, my phone number is 936-672-7716. That is my personal cell phone number.
Oh, I wouldn't have done that.
Well, let me tell you something, I am accessible, and Nathan can tell you. If you call me, if I don't answer, I'm going to call you right back pretty fast, and if text messages gets long, I'm going to call you. Yeah, I'm, you know, I want to, if I can't meet you face to face, I want to talk to you on the phone, so I am accessible. That is my personal cell phone number. I have a campaign phone number, but I just gave you my personal number, so I am reachable, and I will take care of the citizens and anybody that wants to call and talk.
Well, I'll say this, too, before we go, I mean, this is, I wish you well, you and Tony, you know, let the citizens decide. I will say this, in my time that I've known you, we've disagreed several occasions, and yet we can still shake hands at the end of the day, go grab a burger, hang out and laugh and joke. We don't do that very often, I think you owe me, but I do like that. I do like that you're accessible, and I do like that you will listen to people and agree to disagree. That's pretty cool.
Absolutely, and, you know, I'm glad you brought that up, because I do, you know, it's okay to disagree. We saw yesterday in a city council meeting that people disagreed, and that's okay, that's part of what we do. Part of the freedoms we have in America is to be able to disagree, and, you know, it's, as much as we may not like that the other person doesn't agree with us, that's part of the freedoms that our people have fought and died for, for us to be able to do that. And further on, I will say that I'm the only conservative running in this race today. I have a voting history, a voting Republican for conservative values, a long history of that, and, you know, as, my opponent's a very nice guy, but he doesn't have a history of voting Republican and conservative for many years, and I do, and those are true values that I've stuck to, and none of us are perfect, it's okay that he's not, you know, not always that he's not, you know, not, not always been a conservative, that's fine, I'm glad he's coming around. But I have a long history of fighting for Montgomery County and for the people of Montgomery County and I'm going to fight like crazy for the people of the city of Conroe.
Well, Dwayne, I want to say thank you so much for coming in and good luck. And don't forget the forum, folks, this Saturday over there with the, uh, is it April Sounds, correct?
April Sound Church.
April Sound Church, at what time?